My name is Saeda Reishma Inamdar, and I am the former president of the League of Women Voters of Fremont, Newark, Union City. I've also served as a chair of the six leagues of Almeda County Council, and I've also served on the state board. Currently, I'm serving as a director, and I co-chair the Action Committee. And we appreciate that we have students that are recording for us in the bathroom from Logan Live, so let's give them a hand. Thank you, Logan Live students. All right, we're going to start with your moderator, Judy.
You took the words right out of my mouth. I'm so glad that we have somebody recording it. And tell everybody you know that say, "Oh, my goodness, I forgot to go." Tell them that it's okay. Go to the Legal Women Voters website, and they are too, it'll appear. Okay, I'm Judy Zlatnik. I'm a longtime resident. I'm just down the street from you, Niles. And before this forum started, we started thinking about questions. And we have some questions, but I believe we have cards that you can write on if you have questions. Now, we're short of time. We've got seven candidates, and we definitely won't be able to answer every question. Okay? Each candidate is allowed a minute and a half to answer questions. And if you want me to repeat the question, just ask me. Don't feel obligated to speak for a minute and a half. If you can answer the question quickly, because then you'll get a chance to answer another question. After the first question, I'm just going to start right here and go down the row, and so you'll know what you're going to call it. Remember to turn your mic off, so I don't have to... So the next person can start talking right away, because I know you guys have a lot to tell us tonight. At the end of the forum, and hopefully someone's going to tell me when I only have that amount of time left, that you will have two minutes for a closing statement. Okay? And I'm going to read off something that's all I have in my things to read, because there's chairs you need. And if you... Everybody pick up the card that's on that chair. It'll tell you how you can get information about every possible election you might want to go with here. Okay? Go online and get the description of the issues. Okay? All right, I want to thank each candidate for coming tonight. Hundred percent, that's great. And for your willingness to run for office in certain communities. There's nothing more important than taking care of our kids. Okay? This forum is sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Fremont, Newark, and Union City. The League of Women Voters, you probably aren't aware, because you're here, that the League of Women Voters promotes political responsibility through informed and active participation of citizens in our government. The League is nonpartisan, and we don't support individual candidates. We are definitely political. If we have studied an issue that has to do with government, and we've studied it and we have come to a consensus, and we have a position, then the League will speak up on that. But other than that, we don't take positions. In the hearts, we may have one, as the League, we don't speak about it. Okay? We never support, as a repetition, any political party or candidate. All right, I did this just backwards, so I said the last stuff first. And, okay, I have some people here who are giving me questions. Okay? The first question is, "What draws you to run for the school board? What would you like to change?" And we're going to start with Pat.
Thank you, Judy. What drew me to the school board was the community and the opportunity to serve this community. And again, the community represents students who I've had in the past, families who've been part of my classroom, families that have been part of my school sites, and are classified and are teachers in this district. And the part two of that question, "What would I like to change?" Really, the change is in this community. We're having demographic changes going on now with class size reduction. We have a budget that's controlled by the governor that's being squeezed. And so informing the public about what's coming and being a consistent leader on this school board is my change.
Okay, Miki.
So the question, can you hear? "What draws you to school board?" I believe that public education is important for our young people. And this is the place that young people learn how to be future leaders, how to be future workforce in the community in the decades to come. So that's... And I am teaching students, middle school and high school, public speaking, and I'm really passionate to help a lot of young people to be successful. And I saw it during my experience of teaching, that how that really impact the students academically. And "What would you like to change?" I, as a school trustee, I would like to support and expand any good program that is beneficial to student academic success.
Thank you. I'm not going to repeat the question, but if you want me to... Follow my own advice. If you want me to repeat the question, just ask me to. Save time, not going to repeat it every single time. Okay?
Hi, good evening. I have been involved in various district activities at New Haven and New York Union City since 2010. And my passion grows because I have a daughter who's in the district, starting from kindergarten, has been in the district, and I see a lot of issues, challenges, especially post-pandemic. So the change that I want to bring is, I want to make sure that we're meeting the needs of our students and teachers, especially in this changing time. There's a lot that's happened over the past few years, and issues have changed. Issues have changed since, you know, the last 10 years, and I want to be able to address those issues.
Thank you. Okay. If you say your name, so...
Melanie Freiber, and I am running for trustee in Area Two. So I am a longtime resident of my area, and I have two kids that have grown up and gone to schools in the district their whole lives. And one of them is special needs, and in the face of the pandemic, I felt like that changed everything for working parents, teachers, administrators. It just changed the landscape of everything. And I feel like as an involved mom, that I wanted to step up and support my community, advocate for the children and teachers. And one of the things, a couple of things I'd like to change is declining enrollment, declining facilities. Some of our facilities are in really bad shape. And also creating a safe and inclusive environment for our students and our teachers.
Thank you. Okay, Michelle.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Pardala. I am a lifelong resident of the Dakota Neighborhood. So my draw to run again, because as some of you may know, I served on the school board previously. Through my lived experience as a Title I student, now parent and grandparent of students in the district, I recognized early on the importance of being an involved community member, not only for my sons and grandchildren, but for all students in behavior. I have a proven record of advocacy, giving voice and visibility to our underserved students and families. And as a school board trustee, I will always prioritize our students' needs by ensuring our classrooms are equipped and supported. Like some of the other candidates have mentioned, there've been a lot of changes in our community in terms of demographics and things of that nature. The one thing that I want to change and has to change is the way that we fund our schools and the way that we take care of our students and our staff. That has to be a priority. Thank you.
Lydia.
Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you to the Legal Women Voters for hosting this event. I think civic engagement and voter education is super important. Thank you for all of you for coming out tonight. My name is Lydia Edom, and I'm Mark Edom. I'm running for New Haven Unified School District Board of Trustees, representing Area Three. I grew up in Union City, a daughter of immigrants. My siblings and I attended Caesar Chavez Middle School and graduated from James Logan High School. I live in Union City, and my children go to New Haven schools. As a parent in the district, I have chaired school site council at Caesar Chavez and at Logan. I have served on the Equity Councils of both schools. And at the district level, I led the District African American Advisory, which afforded me opportunities to partner with the district to initiate and move forward our equity work, so that our schools are safe learning environments for all of our students. And I'm a proud board member of the New Haven Schools Foundation. So therefore, as trustee, what I would change, I would continue actually to support the district's work in equity and diversity. I will work to send more monies to school sites while tackling the problem of declining enrollment. I agree that funding of our schools does need to change. And lastly, I will work to ensure that our schools provide the best educational programs and opportunities, like maker spaces, robotics, foreign language, and arts in all of our schools K-12. Thank you.
I'm Michael Gonzalez. So in order to answer this question, I got to tell you about my experience in education. As a third generation Union City resident, as a current teacher, only public school teacher on the school board, it started going to schools at New Haven, and me, when I was having a learning disability, I struggled in school, and I would act out a lot. And teachers recognized that I was attention-seeking behavior was... It was because of my learning disability. And so they were still, despite me acting out and being a problematic student, they still would take the time dedicated towards recess or lunch to tutor me in it. And so I never forgot that, and that's why I became a teacher. And being a teacher, this job is like perfect for me, because I can flow with everything that is in real time that is happening. Like, for example, the pandemic, a lot of acronyms are... It's like a second language, and I never miss a step. I know exactly what they're talking about, because I live in and breathe it. My wife's a teacher, my mom was a HR teacher, and my sister's a teacher, so I'm going to have to stop.
Okay, I'm going to start with Miki. And if I... If I was to choose, just skip it, okay? All right? Your turn will come. She's going to go for this then. Okay. The next question is, "What is your key issue that you think needs to be addressed in the school district? And what are your suggestions for what you think needs to be done to change it or improve this particular area?"
All right, so my question is, I just want to repeat just to make sure that I did it right. What is your key issue, and what is the suggestion to resolve that?
And what would you like to do? What would you suggest to do to approve it or that issue?
Okay. So based on my experience teaching my students, I know that the key issue that I'm concerned is, a lot of students didn't know... They don't have the ability to understand what kind of career that they pursue later on in the future. So, and also, a lot of students need to learn how to do critical thinking. So I think the... My suggestion, and I'm really focused on that, because I think it's very important. Once you graduate from high school, you're in the real world. You need to be able to be a leader and also have ability to do critical thinking. And my suggestion is to expand the current program about career skill, like the MVROP, or any program that the superintendent Thompson trying to expand is the decoding and robotic program at UC Davis, or the independent study, because I think that is the way the program for the future education is going to change, close to the independent study. That's my suggestion. I would like to support that. I would like to expand that program and also life skill for students, the younger students, for all students. That's my suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you. I see declining enrollment as one of the major issues. And there is a trend and projections that we'll be losing about 100 students a year. And that affects the district's budget, and there, you know, that brings potential decisions on staffing and school sites. My plan is to work with Dr. Thompson, as I have already been talking to him, about how we can promote the programs that we already have, making ourselves center of excellence in programs that we have existing, such as the dual immersion programs, the STEM programs at both the elementary and the middle schools, forensics, band, leadership, just some examples of programs at Logan. How can we highlight those and market those? James Logan is one of the... In the top 15% of high schools across the country. How many of us know that? We don't. How can we market that? Logan offers over 20 AP courses. We need to continue to market our school district and what makes us different from private schools. Private school teachers don't have a requirement to be credentialed, whereas public schools, it's an requirement, and we have great teachers because of that. These are things that we need to be sharing with our community and our public.
So, I'm sorry, can you repeat the question one more time?
I don't...
I think I have the general gist.
Well, the question was, "What do you see as the key thing that you would like to work on? And what would you do in that field to make it better?"
Okay. So for me, one of the key things that I've been thinking about is oftentimes when we have these active shooter drills, or we have an active shooter, the special needs kids are left behind. So there isn't a plan for the kid in the wheelchair who possibly can't be picked up and carried safely by their teacher. I think kids on the spectrum, there isn't necessarily a good plan in place for their safety. I think that is one of the key things I think needs to be focused on. I also think when we implement 504s, there's a lack of understanding sometimes from the educator's perspective into what's an accommodation, what isn't an accommodation. And I think there needs to be more clarity around that for our special needs kids.
Thank you.
A key issue for me, as a student, as a former trustee, and continues to be, is what is commonly referred to as the achievement gap. I like to refer to it as the access gap. And so I would like to continue to do the work that the district has been doing for years, and they've made some great strides. We've got some great programs going on in the district right now. The C-STEM pilot over at Hillbilly Press at CCMS, the U cinema project over at Searls. And so finding more innovative ways to engage our students and bridging that gap between home and school and supporting our families so that they can support their students at home. Like I said, you know, they're doing great work in the district already. So for me, it's just a continuum. With regard to declining enrollment, the best way to market and attract people is let's work together to adjust the achievement gap. Thank you.
Yes, for me, the key issue in our district is making sure our schools are safe. And it's not, it goes beyond just physical safety. Schools and classrooms are an environment that harbor innovation, creative thinking, and safe spaces for children to be themselves. And that is not always the case. I think that it's really important that our district has hired a Director of Equity Access and Achievement, a position that's dedicated to this work. And as President of the District African American Advisory, just in this past school year, we partnered with the district to push out new board policy and new administrative regulations. And hopefully, that will enact new behaviors in our schools. As a trustee, I really want to make sure that this work is pushed forward. I want to make sure that we are implementing, as a district, these policies, these new policies in a way that protect our teachers and our staff. As we know, they are going to be on the front lines of these new policies. They are the ones that implement these policies. And our district has done the work. The board this past year, last year, passed a series of resolutions that honors almost all of our, well, all of our ethnicities and cultural roots in this district. We need to push that forward. The key criticism is that resolutions go teethless. And I want to ensure that we actually put some teeth on these resolutions and make sure we have safe learning environments for all of our kids.
All right, last, budget. Our state is entering into recession. You know, a lot of these programs and the extra staff are wonderful, but we're going to have to make some cuts. And so my whole thing, since I've been on the board, is maintain and retain. So maintain the programs, not cut any of our programs. Maintain our enrollment, which this year, we are not losing any. The projections keep up. And then retain, retain great staff. Our staff doesn't leave. It's been different since after the pandemic. More issues, learning loss, social, emotional learning. And then what I really want, after the pandemic is over, now we can focus on real teaching, I really want to get to the science of reading, kind of our meat and potatoes of education. Thirty-two percent of our students, our third graders, are not reading at grade, are only reading at grade level. And so I want to push a science of reading curriculum. Our systems are in place. And so that's the benefit of me working at another district and actually living it in real time, what works over there, taking it over here, or criticizing what they're doing over there, and see what we're doing here, and familiar with our curriculum. And so that's what I want to do this next go-around, if elected.
Okay. Pat?
Thank you. The key issue for me is leadership. A lot of what the candidates have all spoken about are programs that are pre-existing. In equity, I wrote policy for this district. Programs, I brought the NASA Explorer Schools to this school district. Knowing the programs we have, is we need to celebrate these programs that we do have. The New Haven Way used to be our big saying, "We would always leave." Now, the problem with leadership, the big issue, is that we haven't been seeing our praises. A lot of people really don't know what's going on in our school sites. What Michael says, coming from a different district, knowing what's going on in different districts. We've never had that conversation. And so what I bring is educational experience that's seen programs, not just in this county, not just in our neighboring districts of Newark, San Lorenzo, and Hayward, but being part of, looking at what's been going on in the state. And I think that I will be able to bring that type of leadership, that type of conversation, and elevating the positive things that we have going on here. Thank you.
Thank you. JP? The question is, "What strategies do you think might be employed to increase enrollment in the district?"
Okay, so that's something I kind of touched on already in my previous answer. But other things that we can do is, how can we address, and there's a forum already scheduled for this, is parents and teachers being able to address how our school district is different from private and charter schools? What are some of the differences? Like I mentioned, having those credentialed teachers. A teacher who's credentialed and has the learning experience is 10 times better than one that does not have that teaching credential. And we know that we're sending our children into a classroom where they have that experience and that knowledge. So being able to highlight what are the differences between us and private charter schools, and being able to highlight those spaces that we have. We have maker spaces. We have dual immersion programs in Mandarin and Spanish. In the elementary, now going into the middle schools. We have the C-STEM program at one of our elementary schools. What are all the programs that we have at our high school? Parents don't know about those programs until they enter high school. So we need to be able to share that with our community, share all the positive impact that those programs have had on our children.
Thank you.
So I think I agree with JP, and I think focusing on the programs that we do have, bringing more awareness to them, also creating safer facilities. I think that's a big issue. Our facilities are rundown. Parents may not want to send those kids to school. I think focusing on what's good and the programs that are already there, and also increasing safety, safety in our schools, comfort.
So I think we're all in agreement that we're open to any type of strategy that is going to, as Mr. Gonzalez mentioned, maintain and retain not only our student population, but our staff members as well. And I think, too, that we have an opportunity to maybe have some conversations thinking outside of the box with regard to, how do we keep staff in the area? The cost of living here in the Bay Area is outrageous. I mean, it's hard for most of our teachers to even live in the community that they serve. And so a lot of our families are being forced to move out. They're building schools, new schools, further and further out in the valley. So I just think that we just need to put our heads together, think outside of the box, and be realistic about what we can do as a school district in the Bay Area and in the economy that we're existing in.
So, yeah, I'm also in agreement with many of the marketing strategies, the need for our community to know what our public schools have to offer, really from a young age, and continue to repeat those things. Key for me, I think, is retention of our families. I think that's a big problem. I think families are really, enter our elementary schools very happy. I think they enter high school very happy. And I think middle school is where we can really focus efforts to retain our families. We really need to get that, I'll call it, transition rate from eighth to ninth higher, even from fifth into sixth, we really need to. Those are really critical years. And anyone will tell you, especially a teacher, I've served on school site council at the middle schools. We've had these conversations, middle school's hard. And you have a variety of needs and a variety of capacity issues. But we are lucky as a district that we actually have two, so we can consolidate resources and really target programs, highlight what we're doing really well in our schools, in middle schools, and really underscore this new value that our district is putting forward with dignity and belonging. I think when schools, when teachers and families and students feel connected to our schools, they stay in our schools, and that really will help our declining enrollment. We can keep who we have here.
I agree with everybody. Everybody said some great points there. Part of my time on board, feeling cheated, was a lot of energy was wasted with the pandemic, and we weren't able to showcase our successes. And so this go-around really showcased, showcased our programs and everything that we're doing at our school. The number-one issue why people leave, what I've been hearing, I don't want to put my school, or I don't want to put my children at those schools, is because safety. But we have put up, we got cameras at Logan, we got fencing. Measure M helped out a lot, but Measure N is what I'm really excited about, an opportunity to rebuild our schools or renovate our schools and modernize them. That's going to be the ticket for our district. That's when change is going to happen. And for, before I got, in 2020, I spent eighteen years in Los Angeles, and I taught out there fifteen years, and I got really active, and CTA, just looking at the state, what they got going on. And what I can tell you is, my dream is to send my kids here, to come back here. These schools are exemplary compared to any other school district. We have the best right here.
Strategies to increase enrollment, a lot of things, again, it's really back to the leadership on this board of talking about what we're actually doing here in this district. For twenty-five straight years, the Forensics Team has been a school of excellence, a national school of excellence in forensics, twenty-five straight years. We don't talk about the forensics team. We need to be celebrating the programs that we have in this district. Comprehensive school safety plans need to be available to families, and, you know, we need to have people who could actually talk about what a comprehensive safety plan is and what's in that safety plan. You know, how do we deal with special ed students, with disabled students? It's in those plans. But again, it takes leadership to point these things out to our community. Recently, on one of my campaign walks, I had a student who was living in a nice big house on Seven Hills, tell me, well, I was at Barnard White in 2004, and I left. The reason why she's back is because she has the ability to send her kids to high-quality schools that have high-quality instruction. A Diamantion could provide that, our schools could provide that.
Well, I agree with most of the candidates here. Marketing is important, I understand that, and not to make public know what's going, what's the program we have here. And in my opinion, parents send students to the school, especially in the high school, with the hope that they will be successful. When they graduate, they're ready, they know what kind of major they're looking to choose in college, or whether they have to take technical school, or they have the route or just go direct to workforce. So I would say the quality, we have to elevate the quality or expand the quality of other programs, like which is supporting career skills. So for instance, for instance, that MP ROP, I'll talk to the superintendent in there, and there is a chance for us to get a potentially matching grant, so we can expand, we can send more students there. So because if the public see that we, because, you know, not every student learn, have to take ten AP classes, right? Not everybody goes to four-year college. So we give a lot more opportunity to all students, and I think it's going to attract public, hey, you can go to New Haven, you have more opportunity, not just going to college, but also have another opportunity to go to technical school and be successful as well.
I'm going to start with Melanie this time, and this one is, what suggestions would you have for the school district to deal with the fact, budgeting? The fact that we don't have the money, sounds like that's what you're saying, that budget is, is, school budget is not adequate for all the programs that we want to have in the school.
So what, so you're saying, what suggestions would I have?
Yeah.
If we don't have budget? I would say, I agree with Ms. Pernales, it's time to think outside the box. It's time to involve our community, our community leaders, active folks in the community to step in, maybe help with scholarships, funding, certain things that we need. I feel like thinking outside of the box, if the funding isn't there, try to raise the funds within the community, have activities, have events, look for fundraising within the community or outside of the community to bring in that extra that we need.
Okay. Michelle?
It's always a tricky question when we start talking about budget, because the way school funding, the machinations of it, there's restricted funds, there's unrestricted funds. This school district has survived for many, many decades off of one-time funding, and we're kind of built out on developer fees, so our immediate revenue sources have dried up. So for me, I don't have a suggestion. This would be just a commitment to work with staff, to work with the superintendent and the Board, and community stakeholders, to make changes in Sacramento where it really counts. Thank you.
Please, can you repeat the question?
How would you, how would you suggest? Handling the school budget when we're facing deficits?
So, I returned to Union City six, six years ago. Prior to that, I was living in Pasadena, ten years advocating, sitting on the Board of their Educational Foundation, leading site councils, parent groups. And one of the things, several things I've seen, advocated for, first, they're toying with the idea of workplace, workforce housing. Now, I have opinions on that, but it's a creative way to bring in money to the district. And there's ways that could be implemented, talked about, there's pros and cons. Another suggestion is parcel tax. We actually really do need, in our community, a local revenue source that, yes, parcel tax has a time, right, time limit, but that's not controlled by the state, that's determined by us and our homeowners and our residents here in this community. So those are just some key suggestions, just, again, outside-box thinking, but initiatives I've actually worked on in other districts prior to coming to this one. I think there are ideas that we do need to explore, we really need to find ways to have localized funding that our district has better control over.
Thank you, Michael.
Yeah, I'm actually on budget, and what I always emphasize and look for is making cuts. We're making cuts outside of the classroom, that don't affect the classroom, there's other ways we can, we can trim off, and we've done that. There's also, what we've done since the pandemic, you know, a lot of things, a lot of meetings, a lot of stuff has been handled, professional development, online, and so growing our online school, which has a broader net, it reaches more folks. We have, we have some students that are living in another state, that because of folks' work, sometimes you get to travel, and so we were able to keep them in our district. And, you know, safety, some, after the pandemic, some families said, I don't, I don't want my kid bringing that home, the virus or any other kind of sickness. And so online, it feels safer online, or any other kind of thing. I know I can watch my, my child here by going online. And so we have grown it bigger this year, and so I just want to continue growing our online school.
Thank you.
Again, you know, I don't want to give a history lesson about Surada versus Priest, 1974, Prop 13, 1978. I don't want to go that far back, but here we go. Let's, let's just talk about average daily attendance. California is one of six states in the country that utilizes average daily attendance to provide funding for the school site. Again, it's, a trustee needs to be knowledgeable about how we're funded and how we set priorities, where we're spending these monies. Now, a few years ago, we closed two school sites, Cabell Elementary, Barnard White Middle School. Those were tough decisions. I think that as we move forward, as a, as a school district, as a community, we will make some tough decisions. And I think that we need the leadership on this Board in this near future to make those tough, tough decisions. I am prepared to make those tough decisions and set priorities.
Well, as an accountant, I think the budget for school is much more complicated than the regular corporation organization. I understand that, I spoke with the superintendent yesterday, Superintendent Thompson, I learned that ninety percent of budget is for human resources, salaries, and then ten percent is for operation. But you know, I think, and I agree with Pat, we need to increase the ATA, average daily attendance, because that's, that's our customer pretty much in the private sector. So if we can increase our ATA, automatically we will have more funding from the state. And how to increase the ATA, I think we have to focus on the quality of education, how we promote good programs that we already have and expanding. And that's my suggestion.
When we talk about the budget, it's very complicated and complex, but I feel like we need to identify areas where the district can get outside grants. There's many grants out there that are available for K through 12. I personally have written millions of dollars' worth of grants for my nonprofit in healthcare, and I sometimes, especially in the recent past, get rejected because they ask me, are you K-12? No, I'm not K-12. So private grants, corporation grants, can we lobby the state and Congress for grants? And how can we bring in more money? Doing budget cuts, it is never easy, and I don't want to go that route, but I want to see how we can bring in extra money into the school district to fund some of these programs that we have.
Okay. The next question is, do you support Measure N? And then why or why not? Okay? Michelle, we'll start with you this time.
Yes, I support Measure N. And I know, you know, when we're starting to talk about heading into a recession, and it's a tough conversation to have, when we start talking about bond measures, parcel taxes, things of that nature. But I also understand that there's another prop on the ballot that has matching funds. So I understand why the school district is moving forward with Measure N. Measure M, I believe, is the current bond measure. Those monies are allocated, and so we've got a lot of work to do here on our facilities. So yes, I do support it.
Yes, I support Measure N. And yes, I did express the concerns particularly to our superintendent about going out for another bond when we still have a bond that's, you know, it is fully allocated, but still on the books. But I think it's a very unique opportunity, if the, if the state follows through with Prop 2, it is passed by the voters, of course, that it's a unique opportunity for our district to, to, to get funds, not just one time, it lasts another ten years, but could potentially last for a lot longer and put us in a really good position, solid position, to modernize our schools, redesign them where necessary for safety, maximize, give our students learning opportunities, and our teachers, facilities, like world-class facilities, to implement, implement this instruction. Our schools are really good, and we turn up the notch on that with world-class facilities and technologies. But some of our declining enrollment might be fault, and we can retain our, retain our families in the district.
Yes, I support Measure N, and Measure M is running out in 2025, and so we were already planning to come up with another bond. You showed me another way schools are being built and remodeled, and, but there is no other way. The school bonds are the, are the way schools get improved. And just, just talk a little bit about Prop 39. When I first ran, I campaigned even harder for Proposition 15, and that was to level the playing field. And so I'm campaigning hard also on this Proposition 3 for the matching funds and Measure N. Yeah, I'll just hit it.
Yes, on Measure N, for all of the above, and really, Measure N is value-added. It adds to our, not just to our community, it adds to the prestige of this district. We've always put in New Haven quality school sites throughout our district. Look at the Lane Eastern, look at Diamantion, look at Kittyama. Those are top-notch elementary schools that were built in 2000. We need to look forward, we need to be innovative, and this is the opportunity, potentially up to $600 million potentially, to have a world-class high school, not something that was built in 1965.
I will always support any measure if that is, will help achieve, you know, elevate the graduation rate and elevate the quality of education. So if Measure N is for all of those, yes, I will support it. And as, you know, I'm a number person, so I will let's see in more detail what the plan is, but if that is really beneficial for the student academic achievement, I will vote for yes.
So yes, on Measure N. Measure N will potentially bring in $272 million into the district, and if the state proposition passes, that will double. So with those funds, we would be able to have state-of-the-art high school, which is really needed. We have Band-Aids at Logan, if anyone's been there recently. And we need those facilities for our next generation.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I am completely in support of Measure N, and my hope is that the proposition goes through as well to match those funds. I think the most important reason for me is our students. Our students can be safer, they can be comfortable. My daughter's at Logan, she sometimes waits to go to the bathroom till she comes home. So I feel like I am a hundred percent behind that, if it will create safer high schools, more technology, more accessible high schools, more inclusive, not just high school schools in general, a hundred percent.
Okay. The next question is, oops. Okay, the next question is, how long do you think New Haven performs in its efforts to be inclusive, both for students and staff, and noted here as LBGTQ, non-college prep, including that sort of thing? Okay? And Lydia?
So I think, I think in the past, say, fifteen months, a lot has been done in our district to be more inclusive. And I mentioned some of the, this is a, this is a dear issue to me, but I know in our community, within this district, inclusive, safe schools are really important. The introduction of the value of dignity and belonging is really key for, and I would just say for Black students in particular. We need to have all of our students feel a connection to our schools. We need to have all of our students feel a connection to our schools. We need to have diverse teaching staff. We need to have diverse school staff so that all of our students see themselves in an adult and have a safe place to go if and when necessary. And I think the district has done a lot of work to finally implement, I think, in a more satisfactory way. I know the history in this district with equity work and inclusion and the diversity work. And I will say that having been a frontline partner as a parent leader in the district in some of this work that the district has made strides. We've seen resolutions being passed that honor all of our ethnicities and all of our cultures, including the LGBTQIA in the community in our schools. And I think our ethnic studies has, Department at Logan has done that to provide curriculum where kids see themselves.
Can you repeat the question?
How well do you think New Haven performs in its efforts to become inclusive, both in regard to students and staff?
Okay, so I would score us as a nine or a ten. I think we're ahead of many other districts. In fact, districts look to us, they come to us and see what we're doing here. On my watch, we hired Equity Coordinator, our Equity work. The dignity and belonging, that is our theme throughout the district. As far as like inclusive schools, we have raised a flag for the month of June, October with our LGBTQ plus community. Yeah, we're doing great work. And part of what I've been instrumental is the Equity Report Card, Equity Matrix, and looking at our most vulnerable communities. Engaging, and not only sharing what the community has had concerns about, but actually putting resources behind it. And so that's what we have done. And so I'm very proud of the work we have done and we're going to continue to do.
We've come a long way. And I believe Michelle Pranale could attest to that because she was on my school site council way back when. And I know that Kathy Kelly was a school board member when Equity was first brought up, my God, almost twenty-five years ago. Everything that we've done, we're moving in the right direction, but it's been slow. As a person who's participated in writing policy for this district, initiating those policies through administrative regulations has been torturous. And it's still, we're still behind the eight ball. We still aren't moving, we aren't where we're supposed to be. And again, we're back in leadership. Who will give our superintendent, or our future superintendents, the will and the push to drive what needs to be done for the safety and emotional security of not just our students, but our faculty members also, and hence our community?
I would agree with Michael that I think the performance is nine to ten for New Haven School on the, in regards to the equity inclusion. So being an immigrant myself, I think I'm very inclusive. I'm an inclusive person because I respect every person, every race, every culture. And I think we need to instill that to our children, to the students. In order for us, you know, in general, in my way of life is to, if we want the world to conform to us, it's going to be hard. But I think it's the best way to do is to ask the world how we can help you. So I hope we can teach the children this later on. But I think New Haven has done a good job, it's nine to ten.
I agree with almost everyone here. The district has come a long way. Post-pandemic, there's been a lot of changes. There's a new diversity and equity director. And there's the dignity and belonging campaign that's been happening with the school sites. School sites do need to be diverse and inclusive. And we have seen that many communities are recognized by the board and the district. There is, you know, community work from the district with various parent groups. And I just want to see, make sure that that continues and moves forward and make some of those issues that come up in those parents group make those a priority as we have with some of the recent initiatives, such as using Begin Word.
So I may be a dissenting opinion. So I believe that we're doing good, that our LGBT students are, we're getting better and better. But I'm the parent of a queer student at Logan, and sometimes she doesn't feel safe. So I feel like we're doing good, but we can do much, much better.
So basically along the same lines and Pat basically made reference to how old we are and how long we've been around. But yes, we've come a long way, we've got a lot of work to do. We live in a very unique community. As a granddaughter of undocumented immigrants and the mother of an LGBTQ identified son. It's important for our students and our staff to feel safe and comfortable being who they are without judgment, without fear of a personal, emotional, mental safety, so that we can really focus on the work of what public education is about, and that's student achievement. So I'm not going to give it a grade because there's, in discussions like this, there's always room for improvement. Thank you.
It's from someone who's concerned about the school shootings that we've had in the past. And what do you think is the goal of the school board? What suggestions would you have to your school board if you were on the school board to deal with the safety of our children in the school?
Can you skip me and come back?
I'm sorry?
Can you skip me and come back? I'm just kidding. A skip and then come back, that's all right.
Don't you want to skip that? You don't have to speak.
No, 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 I'll speak. Actually, that's like my greatest nightmare is really, and it's, it could happen. Why couldn't it happen here? Do you think of it as some rural place? We're too diverse here to have that kind of problem. And it could happen here. And being on board, on the school board and having to have a media storm and knowing some of the family and just being scared, kids, parents don't want to send their kids to the school. I think about it a lot, I honestly do. And what have we done so far? We have a fencing system, we have cameras. We have a safety protocol when, in trainings, when there's an active shooter happening. We do take this serious. But Measure N, I think we, Measure N and especially the high school, we need to centralize James Logan. And those old 1961 buildings that my parents went to, we need to tear those down and centralize, make it closer. I know when I was going across campus, I was late every single day. And there's just too many, it's too big, there's too many areas where someone can hide. And so just modernizing that and centralizing that, making them safer.
Again, the role of the school board when it came regards to safety. Again, part of my campaign is to listen, learn, and leave. As a school board member, it's incumbent upon the trustee to have an understanding of what is a comprehensive school safety plan? What are the elements of a comprehensive school safety plan? What are the impacts of, you know, a potential disaster happening at your school site? Again, another history lesson, we've had a shooting. We've had a shooting on our campus. It wasn't too long ago. I could name some of the former students. So it can happen. It has happened in our community. And so are our administrators, are our structures in place? Do you have a trustee that can articulate what is on that plan for each of those school sites? And, you know, actually go to and find the administrator that's in charge? I have that understanding.
Well, school shooting is very serious. And I think as a school board, we can help with finding a solution with maybe additional budget. Or I understand that Superintendent Thompson said that Law Look has fencing and also has a security camera. But he's hoping when he has more budget, he can beef up more of the security in the school. So I think also it's important, we need to track the social, emotional, you know, the social condition of every student, you know. We just have to be more attentive for students who just have problems. So we kind of pay attention and hopefully help them to be better and just to be aware of that. And also, like I said, if we have more budget that we can help with to beef up the security, the security equipment for the school. Thank you.
It's unfortunate that this is something we actually have to be talking about. But, you know, there is active training, active shooter trainings and drills for students. Logan and the two middle schools have installed cameras and are updating their fencing. And each of the schools do have a comprehensive school site safety plan. And the last thing is, we have to take threats seriously. We need to make sure if there is a threat out there that, you know, as parents, as board members, we're reporting those. And, you know, lastly, along, you know, Measure N is going to be important for updating our facilities and making sure they are state-of-the-art so we don't have as many open spaces in those corners where anyone can come in and hide.
So I agree with what most folks have said. I think Measure N will help with a lot of that funding. And I feel like the safety plans, if we're being inclusive to the special needs students, those, the disabled students. But I also feel like we should fund more mental health resources so we don't have the shooters and that we can prevent things in our community. Our students have resources and they have these mental health resources that they can tap into. I feel like that's even more important than keeping our schools safe. We have to keep our community and our students, we have to have access to them to have these mental health resources and support system.
So as Pat mentioned, we did have a shooting in one of our campuses. Sadly, unfortunately, Pat and I were on the front lines of that whole situation. School shootings, the bottom line is, we just have to be prepared. Not if it's going to happen, it's, we have to be prepared for when it happens. It's interesting for me, as a student and former trustee, hearing the discussion basically come full circle because it was not too long ago where cameras and fencing at Logan was absolutely not going to handle because we didn't want our high school looking like a jail, looking like a prison. But here we are. So with regard to the board's role, we just have to be prepared in each and every one of our school sites. What we can do at a state level and a national level is talk about it and keep talking about it and get, you know, these laws changed at the national level. Because that's, you know, and it's different from state to state, jurisdiction to jurisdiction, how people feel about guns. And so we just need to basically be prepared and advocate and talk about it. Thank you.
I agree with what's been said. I think Measure N will help us to modernize and give us the equipment we need. I think the role, I'll finish that thought, and that mental health services are provided at all of our sites. We just got a major grant from Kaiser to put Social Emotional Wellness Center at Logan and provide telemedicine specifically for mental health resources for students. So these things are here. And part of our, I think part of our role as a trustee is that we make sure that communication about these resources are being, are being told to our community at large. I think another important role of the board, of a trustee, is to forge relationships with the city. Our city has a variety of services in place that can extend into our schools for our families to tap into. And also really to build just more community. I think if we know each other, we know one another, we feel safer. We all feel safer. We don't need to have our school district and the city siloed. And I know that there is relationship and joint meetings there and just to really broaden those, but specifically towards the issue of school safety, active shooting in our community.
Thank you. This is probably going to have to be the last question. What are your thoughts about restricting cellphone use of the students? I know that my son was talking about this in our last weekly cellphone call because he's a teacher and he's going to have to tell kids they have a lot of their phones. So. Back to you.
Well, restricting cellphone use. As a former principal of Newark Memorial High School, I had to institute a cellphone restriction, which is very difficult. Again, another history lesson. And New Haven was the center of this. Back in, I believe it was the early 2000s, we banned cellphones. But because of the incident we had at Barnard Wythe Middle School, we brought cellphones back. And so this is just another cycle of, you know, issues that come forward to the school board and our communities. It's tough to say no to a student who's given a cellphone. I've told as a teacher, I've told as an administrator, students that, hey, there are classrooms in all our classes, there are phones in all our classrooms. You can reach an administrator to make the phone call. But, you know, there are some families who really are adamant that my child needs to carry a cellphone. Yes, rules and regulations will be made. It'll be up to the school board to approve those things. It will be a difficult decision. And, you know, personally, it's going to happen. And so what we do as a community will determine what that policy will ultimately be.
I think restricting phone use in classrooms is very important. And I agree with Pat, we need to have a certain policy as a board or trustee to decide how far we want to restrict. And I know there are some students where, which is the family really need the child to carry the cellphone. But at least if we can tell the child, you know, that's my experience as teacher, I would like this, you know, everybody has to turn off your cellphone except that you're a timer. So I like the timer here. So I like the timer here and that's a good idea. I like the way you have this 15 seconds and in Toastmaster, we have 30 seconds. Okay, so yeah, I think it's really important because otherwise the student cannot learn because the cellphone is really distracting during class time.
I believe phones off and away during class time is, you know, that's my personal opinion is that that's what should happen. Conley Cabeos currently piloting the pouch, it's a pouch where we put all the cellphones in there. So I would be interested to see what the result of them piloting that program would be and instituting a policy based on the results of that pilot program.
So my son goes to IBC, he has a phone, they have a pouch policy, they put it all in the pouch before they go into the class and then they take it when they leave the class. My son's phone broke and we had to get him a replacement and one of his concerns was if there was a fire or a shooting, he couldn't reach me. So I feel like it's really important. I agree restricting it in the classroom, but I think kids should have their phone when they're not in the classroom. If it makes him feel safe and it makes me feel safe, I want it.
So I believe there needs to be some restrictions, you know, the off and away, how effective has that really been? And it takes time away from our staff to address students, put your phone away, put your phone away, put your phone away. And it takes away from the educational process and it's disruptive. But I think it's important that we develop some type of framework so that we get a commitment from families and partnering with us to understand, for our students to understand, we want you to have your phones, we want you to feel safe, we want you to focus on learning, but there's a time and a place for your phone. And it's not in the middle of instruction. We didn't have phones when we went to Logan, we had a standard line to use the payphone. So, and, you know, my kids ask me, how did you know, how did not know when you were leaving school? Well, we had that understanding and I had 20 minutes to get from Logan to home. I was late, I didn't have to worry about the phone, I had to worry about all of the family members that were going to tell me I had locked home. So, you know, it's changing times, we have to adapt, but at the end of the day, it's really about partnership with our families and supporting our students' learning. Thank you.
So I'm a technologist and I'm a B C who invests in innovation and so I don't believe in restricting the classroom, cellphones in the classroom. I just think cellphones are a tool and our teachers are equipped to help our students learn how to use cellphones in a way that they are going to find information, get the things that they need and do research. How do you find primary sources on the internet with your phone? So that you're not just plagiarizing, but you're actually using it as a tool for research and academia ultimately. I go to back to school night in open house and I ask the teachers, what do you all talk of, you know, what's your take on Chat G P T? Because you can't restrict it, but how do you use it? Because it is a tool and it's a tool that the next generation workforce has to learn how to use alongside their cellphone and their tablets and these computers and whatever else. So me, I think we, this generation needs to get with the times and we need to teach our children how to use these devices in a way that edify them, use it responsibly and use it in a way that ultimately drives innovation and our society forward.
I say no, don't go down that hole because it's controversial. You're going to have half the community, yes, no. It's, you don't want to go down that road at all. So in my own classroom, two years ago, I had to restrict it. I had, you know, you check in, put your phone in and I lock it up. The last two years, I haven't had that problem. My colleague always has problems with kids on their cellphone or pulling it out and so if we do implement a no cellphone policy, then who's going to manage it? The teachers? Because I don't want that extra duty of, you know, checking, is that a cellphone? Let me see your bag. That takes away from classroom instructional time. So I say stay away from that. If it's a state mandate, that's something else. Each school can have their own policy, what they decide. So leave it up to the schools, how they feel. Yeah.
That, we're going to have to stop there and I know we have many more questions that we weren't able to get to, but we're going to have each candidate and my colleague will start with you, just for you. Going to have a two-minute closing and then, and that's overall, I'll be lucky to have a chance to say what I want to say before our time.
Okay, so I was always taught that education is empowerment and I believed that then, I believe that now. So education is the gateway into success. And so my whole life was about education, struggling in education and overcoming struggles. And so I've always felt that I've been, I was put on this earth to do something special. I had a purpose. My community, people, teachers, staff, they believed in me and they made me feel that I'm going to do something special in this world. And so I haven't forgot that I had to go away to, I had to leave to go Los Angeles, go to school and to purchase a house down there because it's just too unaffordable here. And so I always wanted to come back and my dream, I mean, I knew it, I knew it when I first started teaching, the one to make decisions is the school board. And my second year, I helped my friend get elected to Los Angeles School Board and I just have a rich experience of my journey in education and who I met. Carlos Montes, co-founder of the Brown Berets, teacher Sal Castro, East L A Blowouts, if you haven't watched Walkout. These influential, we've been on campaigns, we've done things and so anyways, here I am and I missed my wedding anniversary, I missed my wife's birthday. To be here, I'm committed. My wife knows this is where I'm at, this is where I'm supposed to be in life. Thank you.
And so I just want to thank all of you again for being here and for these great questions that were asked tonight. I do appreciate the opportunity to speak to you about why I believe I would be an excellent trustee. And it's because of my years of service as a parent leader across three different school districts and I didn't touch upon what I've done in other districts, but I brought all of that experience and advocacy to this school district. In six years, I've done a lot and Ajay talked about the N Word Initiative that under my leadership with the district African American advisory has been rolled out this year and I hope to continue to see that work pushed forward. I spoke to you about other, my experiences tackling school budgets and school financing. One of my pillars is also to push more of that financing to the school sites, to school side councils where you have more collaborative bodies that are intimate with their school community and closest to our classrooms and our teachers and ultimately, right, our students. I'm a collaborator, been building relationships amongst parents, parent leaders, parents broadly, teachers, classified staff that often don't get talked about in these conversations, to bring them into governance and ultimately with our principals, district admins, superintendents and different board members across, again, different districts. So thank you for the opportunity to earn your vote tonight and I hope you will consider me for your next trustee. Thank you.
So again, as Lydia just said, I want to thank everybody for making the time on a Friday evening after a long week, I'm sure, to participate in this process. I am a public servant, not a politician. I have no desire to be a politician, I have no political aspirations beyond serving my community. For 25 years, I have worked directly with our marginalized and vulnerable populations, delivering direct services through my work in the community here and as well as my career. I've worked for social services, I've worked for Housing Authority, I'm currently working as a probation officer, L A County Probation. Through those interactions, I have learned what is possible if we work together and respect one another. Our collective human experience is so much richer and so much better and that is the legacy that I want to leave, not only for my immediate family, but for everybody in this community. Because representation matters for all students in our schools, I respectfully request you cast your vote on November 5th, based upon what you have learned about me this evening, what you know about my proven track record and not my yard signs and mailers and political affiliations and endorsements because you're not going to see me going for any of that stuff, I just don't do it. Those things have an associated cost and that is a cost Michelle Parnella is not willing to pay. So to learn more about me, please visit my Facebook page, Parnella for N H U S D Trusting Area Two. I thank you for your time and I ask for your vote.
Yes, I also would like to thank everybody's time for coming here and spending their Friday nights. I have deep respect for Michelle's work in the community and I also agree that representation matters. As the parent to the kids that have grown up in this district, grown up in the schools through COVID, as a working parent through COVID and with a special needs kid, child. Before I was a parent, I was a CASA for seven years, which is a court-appointed special advocate, which I advocated for kids in foster care system. One of my core beliefs is that we can improve our children's lives with strong community and school support. As the parent of a child in the district, I feel like I'm tapped into the needs of students and I have good relationships with teachers and I'm also the only candidate in my race that has the endorsement of the Teachers Association and the teachers that are teaching our students in our schools. So I humbly ask that you vote for me on November 5th. Thank you.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum and to the audience members for coming out on a Friday night. My commitment to strengthening our public school system is rooted in my own experience as a public school student. As a parent with a child at C C M S, I'm dedicated to working with the board members, educators, district staff, parents and community leaders to uphold and enhance the district's tradition of excellence. I currently serve on the school site council as the chair and have contributed to several district initiatives. I participated in the superintendent hiring process, served on the renaming committee for Albardo Middle School, chaired the 711 Advisory Committee, which reviewed any recommendations on the district's surplus property. Recently, I also chaired a parent advisory group to help immigrant families navigate their schools and district policies. As a school board member, my top priorities would be addressing post-pandemic challenges, advancing diversity, equity and inclusion, integrating technology including maker spaces and providing more professional development and resources for our teachers. The pandemic has significantly impacted our children's needs, particularly in the areas of mental behavior health. My goal is to tackle these issues with proactive, inclusive solutions that support all the students. I have the endorsements of Assembly members Liz Rortegen, Alex Lee and our State Senator Ayesha Wahab and the Democratic Party. I was also humbled to be recognized as Woman of the Year for my community work. As a school board member, I am committed to fostering a supportive, inclusive and high-quality educational environment for all the students in our district. I hope to earn your vote in this election. Together, we can create a brighter future for our children and community.
First of all, let go thank you everyone to come here on Friday night. Thank you very much to attend this event. I'm an immigrant and I am, I believe that public education is very important, especially for our young students and our young people. This is the place that they learn to be future leaders and a future workforce that is going to take care of our community in decades to come. And as your board member, I would like to support and expand programs that's already established here, but I would like to elevate the graduation rate, elevate the attendance rate and I would like to have, I would like to support program that is prepare students for a two or four-year college or go to technical school or entering an academy. And also I would like to support program that give students opportunity to explore what kind of career in demanding markets that they are ready when they graduate from high school. And I would love to work together with the teachers, staff, parents, local businesses, local trade union, local labor union, because all this is for the student succeed. I am a grassroots candidate. I don't, I'm not interested to climb the political career ladder and my goal, I just want to give back to the community. My daughter already graduated from college and I just wanted to place her focus on student academic achievement. Your vote for me is the vote for student success.
Again, thank you, League of Women Voters and the audience and those of you watching via St. Logan Line. As your New Haven Unified School District Board of Trustees, my focus will be results, not politics. I'm the only candidate, not only being a parent, but I was a teacher in your classrooms and a site administrator in not just your elementary school site or your middle school, of high school. So I've been in all three areas. I will use my experience of 30-plus years of public education experience within this district to build cooperation and collaboration for the success of our schools and our students. I'm endorsed by the certificated staff members of the New Haven Unified Teachers Association and the classified staff members of the California School Employees Association, both classified and certificated members, employees of this district. My priorities are educational equity, collaboration among educational partners and ensuring that every student receives quality education and support services. This is a community-driven campaign supported by parents, certificated teachers, top site staff members and students. This is an important race. This will determine the future of our school district and its effect on our community. We need a candidate who is best to represent the students, teachers and parents to guide the district with the ability to grow our strong community through collaboration and consensus building. I believe I am that candidate. My endorsements includes Union City's former mayor, Mark Green, retired teacher, Tommy Lindsay and Human Relations Commissioner Anne Yack. Join our coalition, vote for Patterson, Area One, New Haven Unified School District.
Thank you very much. Everybody who's running for office, the those of you that came, and I want to, I want to call out the students that are here tonight. I am the daughter of a teacher, I'm a credentialed elementary school teacher and my grand, I'm married to a teacher and my, one of my sons is a teacher. And I've done a lot of these candidates for us. I want you to know that I have never enjoyed one as much as I've enjoyed this one. I'm just thrilled as an educator that youth people and the people of this city get a chance to vote for people that care so much about education and your children. I want you to help because there's not enough people here. So as I said at the beginning, the recording will be on the League of Women Voters website, okay? When we say League of Women Voters, we mean League of Women Voters of Fremont, Newark, Union City. You don't even have to spell it out, you can Google L W V F N U C and I do it all the time because I'm a terrible typist and you'll get the website. So you know people that should be here, tell your neighbors. Tell your neighbors. Put it on Facebook. If you're a, you know, I, I don't do much on, on, online messaging and stuff like that. But if you do, put it on a list. If you've got a list, put it on a list. Let people know that they can see the quality of people that want to work to educate kids in Union City, okay? One more thing, she's passing out there. This is something that will tell you, whatever election that you may participate, you can get nonpartisan information by going to the site that's on this little paper. Now, take more than one, I printed it up. I'm happy to have you do it, okay? Vote for 11. Oh, good, okay. That's what you do, for 11. Okay, so thank you so much for coming. And I hope you are as inspired as I am by the people that you get to choose between to educate the children in this city. And I have one more thing to say. Talk to the city, the city. If you don't talk to the city council, you're missing a bet. Because the quality of the city, a really important part, people aren't going to come to Union City unless they know the schools in Union City are excellent. And as a person down the street in Fremont, I want you to know that I have never heard anything but good things about the schools in Union City. Thank you all.